Washington DC. Hello? Call Biden back sometime.
Yeah. Biden thought he was calling Kamala, but he got you.
Oh, he's in the meeting.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time. We have a court. Commissioner Adam is here and myself. I've got notification that Commissioner Raybo is not going to be available today. He's, I guess, he's experiencing some difficulties. So with that, go ahead and open the meeting and invocation would be in order. I'll go ahead and provide the invocation. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
With that, go to the agenda. Reading.
Okay, for today's meeting. Under the role call, did you want, sorry, I thought you turned it over to me.
Yes. It says, attend the approval.
Okay, all right, all ready. So, under the consent agenda items, you have the approval of the commission minutes for January eighteen, twenty twenty-two. You have approval of commission meeting minutes for February first, twenty twenty-two. You have approval of the special meeting of Grand County, Moab City and San Juan County Commission Collaboration Group minutes for February eighth, twenty twenty-two. You have the approval of the check registers for January fourteenth through January twenty-seventh. You have the approval of the check register for January twenty-eighth through February eleventh. You have the approval of Hole in the Rock General Store Business License, twenty twenty-two. Item number seven, approval of a beer license for the Height Outpost by Tikaboo Management LLC. Number eight, approval of small business purchase order for Granica's subscription for thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty, I work subscription for seven thousand nine hundred. Grand Circle Guide for three thousand and Public Safety Building Kitchen Steamer for sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. On item number nine, approval of a letter of support for San Juan County for the USDA grant application supporting a training and education retreat on November sixteenth. Item ten, approval of the San Juan County Health Department HIV Prevention, twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two, amendment number five with the State of Utah Health Department. Item number eleven, approval of the San Juan County TV Prevention and Control Amendment number three with the State of Utah Health Department. Item number twelve, approval of the Guest Guide Contract Renewal for Production of RIT Maps and Community Guides for Blanding, Monticello and Bluff. The San Juan County add in the Guest Guide. Item thirteen, approval of the appointment of Ann Austin to the San Juan Counseling Board for four-year term. Under recognition, presentations and informational items, public notice for the election candidate offices in twenty twenty-two. Review of that public notice that'll be presented by Lyman Duncan, our county clerk auditor. Item number fifteen, twenty twenty-two Permanent Community Impact Fund Board, CIB List Distribution Discussion. I'll present that under Business Action Items. Item number sixteen, approval of the Go Travel Sites, twenty twenty-two Contract with Online Media Insertion and Canyon Country Website Updates. This will be provided by Elaine, our Director for Economic Development and Business Services. Item number seventeen, consideration and approval of a distribution of the Rural Grant Fund of one hundred seventy-three thousand. That'll be presented by Elaine as well. On item number eighteen, consideration and approval for Collection of Annual Gross Sales for San Juan County for CY twenty twenty-one to determine the sales tax leakage. That'll be presented by Elaine. Under item nineteen, nineteen is the US Forest Service Cultural Site Visitor Management Project that'll be presented by Nick Sandberg, our County Public Lands Planner. Item twenty, consideration and approval of the Pine View Subdivision. That'll be presented by Scott Burton, our Planning and Zoning Director. Then item twenty-one, consideration and approval of the Merceru Subdivision, Amendment Three, Lot One and Lot Two A. And this will be presented by Scott as well. And then Commission Reports. That, Commissioners, is your agenda for today.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second. Any consideration for deletion or addition to the agenda? There's none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I also oppose. None? Motion carries, two in favor, zero opposed. With that, go to public comment. Do we have any lists?
Okay, back to our public comments. Just as a reminder, public comments will be allowed for three minutes each. Please be courteous and kind in those public comments. Refrain from swear words or anything, loud laughter, clapping of hands. And so, with that, first we'll take those here in the audience for public comment, and then we will resort to those individuals online wishing to make a public comment. There is a raising of the hand feature on Zoom, so if you're wishing to make a public comment on Zoom, go ahead and raise your hand on there, and then we'll recognize you according to that. And so, first we'll take those here in this room. Hold on just a second. Okay, the first one it looks like I've got is John Gerard. John just states here where he lived within the county, and then we'll go from there.
I don't come up to them.
Okay, go ahead.
Give your name and where you live. My name is John Gerard, and I am from Moab, Utah. And I am here as a concerned citizen. And I'm a little unprepared. I really wanted to observe, but I feel like these things need to be said. Many of you are aware that the business climate in Moab is becoming more hostile towards the tourist environment, tourist companies. It is our understanding that the Grand County does want to engage in conversation with San Juan County, and obviously I do not have the wherewithal to know what those things would be talked about, and I do encourage diplomacy. My concern is, is that we, no matter what is said, that I ask of you to always remember your position and to remember your constituents. Because it's my personal belief that our commission has lost that, and that they don't longer really have our best interests in mind. And I feel like, you know, this environment, you know, obviously they're engaged, see what they have to say. There's lots of good things that should be worked out, all right, but just everything that is said, always remember, is this what's best for San Juan County? Is this what's best for our constituents? All right, there's a lot of people that live in Moab that are also in San Juan, San Juan County, and they're counting on you to not become Grand County, all right? I do firmly believe that we are the California of Utah, and I know that sounds horrible, all right, but the way our laws are, the things that are coming down the pipe as far as our Title Five towards our businesses, it's becoming really challenging to conduct business in Moab, and I just encourage you, have integrity, be true to your constituents, be true to your position, and San Juan will benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all that we have signed up here in the audience. So shift online. Looks like I've got Monette Clark with her hand raised. Go ahead, Monette.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, barely.
Okay, well, I want to make a public comment about that issue as well, same one. I, I attended that special joint meeting just to listen, and I'm in support of San Juan County cooperating with Moab City and Grand County in the Spanish Valley area. We have a lot of realities here where I live, in Spanish Valley, and I share a lot of resources here with the other two governmental entities. It's just so benign that we have to work together on making our valley from top to bottom a livable environment. Grand County and Moab City have made a lot of mistakes, in my view, and I would not like to see those same mistakes coming up into San Juan County. And I think that the other two entities have learned their lesson about, I don't know, it seems like been overrun down there with, with the travel business, although it's a very wonderful business. It's just got out of hand. So I'm in favor of the, of the joint cooperation. I just wanted to tell you, there are a lot of people here in Spanish Valley who are in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised online. If you're unable to raise your hand, you're just on your cell phone, you can go ahead and unmute yourself at this time and make a public comment. Star six would be the feature to do that. Not seeing anybody yet unmute themselves, Commissioners, that today is your public comment period.
With that, no other comments?
Nope, that was it.
Then we go to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda today.
Second. Any comments or discussion now, then call for the vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I also oppose. Nay? There be none. Motion carries, two in favor, zero opposed. Go to recognition, presentation, and information item. Number fourteen.
Okay, on this one, we've got the presentation will be given by Lyman Duncan. You should be able to do it right there, Lyman. You can sit right there. Just pull down that microphone.
Thank you. As you know, two thousand twenty-two is an election year, and Megan and James and myself have been working very carefully as far as the processes of having an election, and we submitted for your packet a public notice that we placed also in the newspaper, on the Utah Public Notice website, but we had a slight amendment, and so I'll just start at the very top, that we are going to work the elections towards November eighth, twenty twenty-two. And we've also filed it with this Lieutenant Governor's Office. The Declaration of Candidacy begins February twenty-eighth and ends March fourth, which is a very short timeframe for candidates to apply and to pay their fees. The Declaration of Candidacy filing periods for Justice and Judges of Court begins in July, so they have a couple of months before they start that process. Also, the Declaration of Intent to Gather Signatures began, began on January third and ends Friday, March fourth, twenty twenty-two at five PM. And for this year in the federal, we'll have a US Senator will be elected for six years, a US House of Representatives, the third district, for a two-year term, and I believe this is John Curtis's spot that he has right now. State Treasurer will be elected for a four-year term. State House of Representatives, there will be one member for a two-year term from each of the seventy-five districts. San Juan County is District Seventy-three, and this is a seat that's held by Phil Lyman. We'll skip past the judicial. We have plenty of time. In the county, we'll have two county commission races, which will be the second and third commission districts for four-year terms. San Juan County Clerk Auditor, I have one clerk auditor for a four-year term. The San Juan County Attorney will elect one attorney for a four-year term also. The San Juan County Sheriff will elect one sheriff for a four-year term. The school board, three school board members in Districts One, Three, and Five will choose candidates for a four-year term. Then below twenty twenty-two filing fees, highest one thousand three fifty-five for the US Senate, House of Representatives, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, State Treasurer, seven hundred and ninety-two, Justice Court at twenty-five dollars, Commission Districts, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents, County Attorney, six hundred and thirty-seven and eighty-four cents, County Sheriff, four sixty-eight, fifty-two, Clerk Auditor, four hundred, and Local Board of Education, fifty, and the State House Representatives, District Seventy-three, will pay eighty-two dollars and six cents for filing fees. So it's coming up really quickly. We're trying to get the word out as well as we can. Any questions you'd like to ask of me?
I have a question.
Mr. Adams?
The three school board seats, one, first, third, and fifth, who are the incumbents in those districts, and do you know if they're planning to rerun?
So due to redistricting, typically we would only be doing the fourth and fifth district this year, but it put three incumbents into the fourth district. And so by state code, now we've got the first, the third, and the fifth that are opened up, and the three individuals who were moved into the fourth district are just going to have to do like a coin flip essentially to choose who represents the fourth school board district, and then the other ones will be at-large board members. So because typically only the fourth and the fifth would be this year, but first and third became vacant due to redistricting, we will be electing first, third, and fifth this year on four-year terms.
And the first was Lori Mun?
Yes, sir.
And third was?
Uh, Stephen.
Stephen Black?
Stephen Black, yep.
And the fifth was who?
Uh, Nelson.
Nelson Yellaman?
Yep.
So so I'm, I'm just trying to understand for, for sure in my own mind what you said.
Trust me, it took me a long time of working through it to make sure I was doing it right.
The redistricting moved one, three, and five, no, one, three into District Four?
Yep, so that put three individuals in the fourth district.
Who is in District Four now? LCD?
No, uh, yeah, Lucille.
Lucille Cody.
Yeah, Lucille Cody.
So because those three incumbents are in there, Lucille Cody doesn't just automatically get that?
That seat is up for election anyway this year, so she's already served a four-year term, and because Lori and Stephen, dude, in state code, it says that they do a coin flip essentially, so the two of them get to finish out a two-year term in that fourth. Yes, a two-year term in the fourth district.
And so the coin flip will be between Lori and Stephen and?
Just Lori and Stephen.
Or just Lori and Stephen? What about the one that's in?
So she, her four-year term is up, so.
And she's not, or she's gonna, she could run.
It's not in, in two years from now. It's not up for, like, it should have been up this year, but because of the redistricting and due to state code, those two individuals who got moved into the fourth district have a right to keep a spot, so they coin flip. One of them keeps it, the other one serves a two-year at-large member, and the one with the coin flip who won that district will just serve two years.
Okay, and so does that create vacancies in one and three because they're
Yes, sir.
no longer in one and three?
Yes, sir. So typically, like, this one, one, two, and three shouldn't have gone up and for another two years, and because of the redistricting, they are going to be up this year for four-year terms.
But they'll only run for a two-year.
Nope, four-year terms.
Four-year term.
Yep.
Okay, it's just confusing to me because
I know.
because redistricting made me run in two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen, and two thousand twenty, all for a four-year seat.
This, this school board districts are different, but I spent about a good two hours on the phone with people up at the Lieutenant Governor's Office, making sure that we had it right.
Knowing you, I'm not even questioning what you're saying. I'm just questioning what I'm saying. All right. Have you had anybody file for any of these positions, Lyman?
No, it'll be February twenty-eighth will be the first.
Oh, that's the first time they can file?
Yes, which is coming up very quickly.
And we had a lot of issues because the original filing dates were March seventh through March eleventh, and there was a bill that was just passed in legislature that came out actually yesterday of the days changing to February twenty-eighth through March fourth. So it was a really, really short deadline, and we're, we know it's really
See what the legislature does?
Really small notice, but we're doing the best we can.
Outguess them. Okay, clear as mud. That's all my questions, Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, go to the next fifteen.
One, one more question. I just thought of it.
Mr. Adams?
People have been, do they notify you if they intend to gather signatures?
Yes, they do have to come into the office.
And they could start on January third?
They could have started on January third, yes. We have not had anybody come in.
Nobody's?
Nobody's come in, no.
Intends to gather signatures?
No, not, not now. They can still. They still have until March, uh, March fourth.
Have them done by?
March fourth, five PM.
March.
So if they came in eight AM, March fourth, and wanted to declare, if they had it done by five PM, then, then good for them.
Now, that really clears things up.
They, you don't need to. It's only if you want to.
All right. Go to the next fifteen. Permanent Community Impact Fund Board, this discussion.
Okay, this one here is mainly just a discussion for us in general. So just as a reminder, last year we had two CIB requests that we put on to be ranked. One was the, the flood management study for Spanish Valley. We ranked that one as number one overall as a ranking committee. And then we also had the Public Safety Jail remodel on there, as well as the old Jado Road improvements. So there are three that the county put forward on that list, and you can kind of see those, those three on here. Obviously, you know, those within our region, Monticello, Blanding, also Bluff, they all get to put in kind of their priorities on this list. We all set together with Southeastern Utah Association Governments, we all set together and prioritize, you know, what everyone's thinking, what should be the top priorities in the county. This is kind of our ranking last year. And then also on here, you kind of see other projects that have come through, whether it's seven-county infrastructure, the Eastern Utah Television Association, all of these also make CIB requests outside of the commission meeting. And so last year, with Eastern Utah Television Association, we did push in a request for funds for microwave units. This continues to support the TV broadcast system throughout the county, and so this one was a critical one for all of our partners in Southeastern Utah. We were awarded that one hundred and twenty thousand dollars total for that project. Also, you kind of see the seven-county infrastructure prioritization. If they were to make specific requests to the CIB, then that's, those are the ones that, that they can apply for. It's critical that our projects, that we have projects that are on this list, when you approach CIB and you make application to them, it's one of the requirements that they be ranked on this list before the CIB would, would really even consider those. And so we try to think through in, in advance of what projects are coming down the line. We know for certain that with this next year, the, as we continue to try to find additional funding sources, we were awarded the flood study funds. That was a grant, a hundred percent grant that we received for that. We'll partner with SITL. SITL will pay half of the, the fees associated with that flood management study of Spanish Valley. You'll see that contract come before you next commission meeting, so we can execute that contract and begin working with the SITL engineer on that. That becomes critical as we look at some of the, the projects that we've got going on up in Pat Creek related to the flooding and fire there. Those kind of all coincide with each other and kind of help with the flood plain management and kind of that future storm water retention area, ways that we can mitigate the floods there. So we do have that one on there. One of the ones that I recommend keeping on here, well, there's two that we had last year that we still haven't worked to get funding, was, one of them was the Public Safety Building. That one's still critical. We have an appropriation request right now to the state legislator for the seventeen million dollar request on there. We didn't rank very high in all of the appropriations, so we're a little bit lower. It's moved on out of, out of the sub appropriations committee, and it has moved on to the Executive Appropriations Committee to see if they fund that. So we're still hopeful that we can get some of the funds there, but would still like to keep the Public Safety Building as one of our first prioritized requests. Obviously, that's a, it's a pretty big ask. On here, you see that total of seventeen million nine hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and four dollars. So it's a pretty big ask, but nevertheless, we're also, we've been approached by the Historic Commission. They're trying to build a museum on Build a museum on um property that has been donated in Blanding, specific for a museum. Um, just close to Maverick in that area there. Uh, they've already received a hundred and five thousand dollars of cultural capital facility grant. Um, they had made the application and received some funds for that. Will continue to work with them if that's something that you'd like to see on, on this list, um. You know, we can continue to, to work with them once they get a little bit further in their cost estimates. Um, for their building, they have some preliminary drawings and everything of what the building would look like for the museum, kind of. The cultural aspect where it fits within um. And kind of promotes the culture around here, um, not only just the Native American aspect, but also. The pioneer movement, so it's kind of an all-inclusive museum that they're planning for there in Blanding. Um, other than that, Commissioners, those are the only projects that I'm aware of that are ready to go. To be added to this right now, I don't know if there's any other?
We've got others.
Okay, I figured.
Two is uh city water rights acquisition that's been awarded, that's already done.
From, is that, that's the one from Monticello?
Two million.
Okay.
They've not, they've not exercised the right to, to spend that money yet, it's only been four months. I'm not sure what they're doing, but they've received that, that request, that ought to not even be on our list anymore. And the other thing is, I think we ought to contact Monticello and ask them if they want to put on the list. How they're going to um. Use those water rights, what are they gonna do with them, they, they're, they're obviously need to get them into their system.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're not even asking for a request from C I B, I know they can get more money from C I B to develop that, those water rights.
And I'll.
The system.
Yeah, I can check with them. This is just the county's requests that we're focusing on right now, Blanding and Monticello.
The Blanding and cities of Monticello on there.
Yeah, they will, they'll make their own requests.
They can't go to C I B.
Totally a hundred percent, this is last year's list, that we're just going off of to generate some ideas, but.
I've been contacted by the Health District to get on the list for a new hospital.
Okay.
And um, they, they did that early last year and we're waiting for. For the list to come up.
To come out.
Year, so I definitely want to see the uh, the new hospital.
Do you know how much their request would be, and we can put that on there?
Thirty million. So, um.
Okay, so thirty million for them, so we can put that on here for a county, so it'd fall under the county.
Right.
And then you'll see Bluff and Blanding and Monticello, those will come in. Once those cities have that discussion, those towns have that discussion.
And I wanna, I want, I, I just can't believe Monticello is not thinking ahead to. To get on the list so that they can apply for more money to develop all that water that they're purchasing out of Spring Creek. And I don't know if we need to reach out to them.
I can reach out to them.
If they're gonna reach out to us, I.
So, C I B.
They're not, let's, let's just put on there's something, so.
For them.
They wake up, they'll uh, they'll.
No, so they will, so Mike will be back down from southeastern Utah and help us. Once, once we have everybody's requests, like I mentioned, this is just the county's request alone. Once they get the city's requests as well, then they'll come back down and coordinate a, a ranking with us, and so.
Those are two things that need to be on the list, or they, or they, or they absolutely cannot even apply.
Some Monticello water, okay.
So. If we have to, let's just put down Monticello Water Rights.
Okay.
Development. And put down there a figure. Hundred million or something. I don't know. Cover all the bases.
Yeah, okay.
My question would be on number five, which section of road are they talking about?
So this was the. The private property portion down there, so right. In front of Goldings, you have this stretch of road that goes back there. Um, up until it hits the Navajo Nation land, so it's that stretch, we worked with Jones and DeMille. Two years ago, they came up with an estimate, which is half a million dollars to put in culverts. Um, kind of help some of the flooding. Since then, and you received the pictures a while ago that had all the alligator-ing of the asphalt and everything down there. Um, on that road, some of the potholes, culver, or the cattle guard was missing a rung in there. We've gone down there since and, and done some patchwork and some, uh, we fixed that cattle guard, things like that, but there's. There's a bigger need when you look at storm water runoff, there's, there's some problems that they have with the culverts and everything down there. Mm-hmm, yep, yep, and so that half a million would go towards that project, and it's only on the private property portion.
Okay.
So we'll certainly add the hospital at the Monticello Water Rights Development.
Blanding Museum.
So that one.
Asking for like a hundred thousand or something?
That one I put on here, I'll have to, I'll get a total cost from there, they've received a hundred and five thousand already.
That's what they've received.
Yes, and that was just a grant that they received, a new building is gonna be a lot more than a hundred thousand dollars, and so. I'll work with them just to, to find it.
Want to miss that because they're really working hard.
They are working super hard, and especially where they're out, the cool part is they're out looking for other means, you know, they're not just coming to the C I B.
I know staff has contacted the city several times for not only C I B grant opportunities, but. Uh, B R I C grant opportunities as well, but um. They're just, they're not acting, but they're not gonna get an opportunity if they're not on the list.
Yeah, same with the rec, yeah, rec funds, it's kind of all the same.
I don't know.
We'll continue to work with them, continue to reach out and see what we can get, I know, you know. They will, they'll push their list forward as well as the county's list, and then we'll combine. Everyone's list, you'll get an, an opportunity.
See the final.
To see the final list and then rank, um, rank those. And so stay tuned, this is just the first crack at it, we um, we just didn't, I wanted to have the discussion with you before. Michael and those guys come down, we've still got.
Get some opportunities for some more money from the legislature, whether it comes through C I B or.
Yes.
Planning budget.
Yeah.
It's gonna be all grant money, and um. I've been working hard on trying to get them to appropriate some money and ask them for two hundred million, but. It looks like they're only gonna appropriate somewhere around sixty million, so. I get think of one point nine billion.
Yeah.
Let two hundred million go to C I B.
Yeah, I keep telling them, they're getting out.
Complaint, according to the lobbyist, is that they don't want to give it to C I B because. Salt Lake, Davis, Weber, and Utah County are all sitting on hundreds of millions of ARPA money.
Hmm.
I told, I said, they don't, they're not even eligible.
They're not mineral extracting, yeah, they're not mineral extracting.
Why are you worried about that, that they're?
Hmm.
The leadership's worried about those funds in those four big counties.
Wow.
And the smaller counties need the help.
Yeah.
But. I don't know. I don't think like a legislator, I guess.
No, so we'll put those on to our list, first San Juan County, um. I don't know, I'll have to talk to Clayton to see if that, they have their own M B A through the Health District. Um, and so it may be just the San Juan County Health District M B A.
Yeah.
Instead of the San Juan County M B A, yeah.
Could run it through that because, and it doesn't.
It doesn't co-mingle our taxes.
Bombing capacity.
Correct, yep.
You still on that board, Doug?
Okay. Okay, we'll definitely add those to ours, are there any other projects that you can think of? To put on C I B, um, we do, we do have that, that LaSalle. Feasibility study, um, yeah, so we have that water study that, that is going on, um. We think we can get about thirty-four thousand, I think it was, from the Division of Drinking Water, just in a grant.
They may not be ready for, for.
Infrastructure.
C I B thing until they complete the water study and have a, have a figure.
Okay.
Haven't, have a project, they don't have a project yet.
Okay, that's true.
That might have to come next year.
Okay, anything else that you can think of?
This is just introduction, when do we? Put it in stone?
So, once they go through and get ready to rank, then we'll, we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Do we, I guess, do we want to put the event center on there?
Elaine's nodding her head, yes, yeah, we certainly could, it, and that would be, that's a good use. If we can't get the grant, we did, Elaine did submit that grant.
Back up.
Mm-hmm.
I need source.
It would be wise. I don't know if you want to do asphalt improvements, things like that, I don't know if you can do that through C I B.
One other thing I was thinking about is the new. Fire police building in Spanish.
Spanish Valley, okay, and that was the.
C I B for that, so.
Yeah, that was the, also with community space in there, okay. Okay. Can't think of anything else. Okay.
Okay.
We'll bring it back with us. Okay, we're moving on.
Sixty.
Elaine.
Travel.
Go Travel Sites twenty twenty-two contract for online media insertion and Canyon Country website updates.
Yes, we are, um, we've been working with Go Travel Sites for several years, uh, but when I came on, I. Saw that we need to make some adjustments to the um, to the website, and what we're um going to do is separate. Economic development from tourism, so we have two different websites. Um, that separation will enable us to have more focus on the communities, Blanding, Bluff, Monticello. At all the communities in um Spanish Valley, or excuse me, in San Juan County, so that we. Um, and that's something that the communities have been asking for, so, and then we'll take the economic development. Part of it and move it to a completely different website, so Go Travel Sites, we, we did a review with them, they're gonna work on um. On the upgrades uh for us, we're gonna also add some additional information on trail. Um, trail, trails and uh, and really, I think, making a more robust website. So they also um work, we also work with them for um. Email, to get email addresses to send out our travel guides, so they're a good company to work for, they're very reasonable to work um. With, and their pricing is um, is great, so um they're very accommodating and excited to work with us on this project. So we're looking at a total of twenties, it's twenty-two thousand, uh, and then another five, so twenty-seven thousand. And that was actually on the original budget that was approved for two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, this is in your budget, you say already approved, I'll make a motion, we approve the request.
Okay, second?
Wha- what I'm trying to do, what I am doing is requesting that each of our vendors send us a, an official contract. So that we have that on documented, and then any invoices that come in. Uh, can be processed um against that particular contract, so, and um the majority of them have um been sending them in. Um. Okay.
Hold on, we gotta vote on that one still. So you had the second, you seconded it, you had Commissioner Mayor Boy. Or, sorry.
Motion.
Yeah, and now you gotta vote.
If there's no further comment, call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also. Oppose, aye, if we, none, motion cares to favors or oppose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's got the next.
I got the next one. Um.
Stay up there.
Yes, I will. Um, this um is consideration, well, action item to, for approval for the distribution of the rural grant funding. Um, the said board, uh, Community Economic Development Board met and re-reviewed all the applications. Um, that came in, which actually totaled over a million dollars that people were requesting um for. Uh, the, the rural grant funding, so we, we originally had a hundred and sixty-three thousand that was allocated. And then we pulled another ten thousand that we had set aside for daycare funds, we haven't been able to find anybody. That um is willing to open up a daycare center yet, so we had a total of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of. Funding um that is to be allocated versus last year's amount of ninety-five thousand eight thirty-three, so it's a significant improvement. Uh, we went through all the applications, the said board did, they ranked and voted and had a lot of discussion on um the requests. So what it looks like uh here, as you see, would like to allocate and confirm to these individuals and their businesses. That will allocate a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars from the rural grant fund um. This, this month.
There was one applicant on here, just for disclosure, there was one applicant on here that. We kind of disqualified regarding the application, it was more for um building improvements, nothing. So the grant was specific for business expansion, business retention, not building improvements, and we felt with. If we were to award that five thousand dollars to that business, um, it would create some havoc with. All of the other requests that were more business-related, um, so we did disqualify that, we'll work better in the future to make sure that. Those applications are pulled before they go to ranking, but. I did at least want to mention that, that there was one that we pulled out. Um, where it would not have a return, an economic development return on investment in the community, in the county.
So the ones that are listed here are the ones that you're uh pru- asking for approval to fund?
Yes, these are the ones that the said board, they, so if you, if you look at the um, at the, we have what their ask amount was, the original ask amount, and then their fund amount that. We polled, uh, and, and the said board agreed to, so if we can get approval today, then we'll send out letters. Um, to these individuals about the funding that they're um going to receive, and I might add that we are going to. Ask them to come back in six, uh, seven months to let us, update us on. How they've used the money, you know, and what they've done, because I have to report that back um to the state, so um. We wanna, we're happy that we can give away this money, but we want to know that, how they're using it, how they've used it. Or if there's a delay in, in it being able to use because they can't get the equipment or whatever it is that they need, so um. Yes, so we'll be uh putting into, you know, these businesses, investing a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars and. Um, like I said, we had over a million dollars of requests originally with all the applications we received.
Do you require them to present an invoice before you give them the money, or do you, you just send them the money?
Yes, well, that, what they did in the application, they outlined specifics of what they needed or wanted the money for, and so then we'll go back. To make sure when they come in to say, okay, where are you with, but we don't ask for any invoices, we request that after. Um, the transit, but after we've given them the funding.
Money.
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And, and uh, you have a, a way to check up on how they use the money?
Yes.
Have to present some.
Right, right, we, we specified that in the application, that if you're receiving this grant money. You have to come back and report how you've used it, because um we had so many applicants, we want to make sure that. You know, they're using it in the right way to benefit San Juan County, so.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second. Any further addition? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. And the motion carries two in favor, zero opposed.
I think it's, I think it's important to note on here as well in the future, this this is one of those programs that's funded through the Governor's Office of Opportunity. Where is, this will continue forward, I believe, next year and a couple more years after, I'm sure. So just for those people that had applied, even though they may not have been selected this go around, there will be more opportunities here in the future.
Exactly.
Important to note that.
And last year, when the state, you know, was challenged with funding, and we only received ninety-five thousand eight thirty-three, and this year it went up to two hundred thousand. And I'm hoping that's kind of the amount that they had originally put in the budget and then it was cut. So I feel confident that it will be, you're right, they can go back and apply this coming fall season and we'll put out the application, so.
How is this money generated at the state level?
Was this state T R T?
Part of the federal fund, or is it internal economic development redistribution?
It it comes from the legislature would allocate this funding to the Governor's Office of Opportunity. And then they've got different programs. They, and I don't know what their total funding budget is, but they have different programs available, you know, that you, people can, businesses can apply for. But this one is really to help the individual community, which I think is a really good thing. They're not just like taking the money and they're letting us in our, the business, local businesses, apply. And I think it's really good because then we make the decisions. We know our small businesses, we know who they are and what help they need, rather than the state, you know, that office deciding what should be allocated. So they're giving us the money. We have to write, I had to write a summary report last year in order to get this money. And I won't be able to write another grant for the two hundred thousand for next year until I write the report on what happened with all of the funding that we allocated. That's why it's important for each of the individual business owners that received money to come back and tell us what they did with it. And they do have a period of time that to extend. If they can't use it right now, they they're able to use it. But we just need to note note that in the report whenever I submit it to the state.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Eighteen.
This is actually a request from the Southeast Utah Association of Local Governments. They asked if I would present this because they're trying, they're doing, they'd like to do a report. Zions Bank would be the the entity that would be looking at all of this information that, or statistics that they would receive. And Carbon and Emery Counties have have done this. But it's really to look at our area and to assess if we do have any retail sales leakage in the county. I don't know that we've ever done this before. I don't think so. But I thought it might be something, you know, sort of a benchmark for us to be able to participate in. We have to pay nothing for this. They'll pick up the cost of it. The the state will send Zions that information because it's all, it's not public, it's private information proprietary. And then they'll do their assessment and come back and and report on what the findings are. You know, if we do have any sales, potential sales tax leakage. So I I think it's a, it's something we need to do. And again, it'll give us a benchmark here for San Juan County.
Make a motion that we approve this request.
Second. Any question? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion cares two in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nineteen. Okay, Mr. Saber.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's twelve o'clock.
Good afternoon then, all right. I stand corrected. You're on the ball. What I've got for you to consider is a project that the Forest Service is proposing for cultural site. Four cultural sites, they're all in the Bears' Ear Monument. And they've got this proposal to better manage the increased visitation that has been occurring at these sites as well as to, and along with that, to protect these sites from damage. The four sites include the Dollhouse, Lewis Lodge, the Dry Wash Caves, and the Twin Kivas. The proposal for the the three sites, the Dollhouse, Lewis Lodge, and Dry Wash Caves, that part of the proposal includes a designation of foot trails to the sites or the vicinity of the sites, improvement of vehicle parking areas off of Forest Service roads, and kiosk installation for site visit etiquette and site interpretation. Now, the one site, the fourth site, the Twin Kivas, no development is planned for there. Evidently, that site is not, not a good one for visitation, and there has been damage there. So there would be no, no development there at the Twin Kivas, and there would be mitigation of past visitor damage for that particular site. Now, the letter you have before you, well, let me back up. There's a, we're currently within a thirty-day comment period for this proposal. That comment period ends March the fourth. So the letter you have before you for consideration basically supports that effort to protect these sites through better facilities for visitors, better direction and interpretation as to how to, how to properly visit a site without damage.
So the letter doesn't say public comment period?
Which letter? The one from the Forest Service? No, ours would not. The Forest Service letter is the one that identifies there's a comment period.
Okay.
February fourth through March the fourth, I believe it was.
These trails are already existing trails, or is there going to be?
My my understanding is that there probably could be at each individual site more than one trail that visitors have developed going all through the area. So the idea is to identify one specific trail, identify that for visitors to use. So they are basically existing trails that people have made. And as far as the parking, to get to the trailhead to get to these sites, there's really nothing that's been developed yet. So people park just anywhere, drive wherever they want. So there would be some small parking areas. I think it was one was seventy by seventy feet, another eighty by eighty alongside a forest road at the start of a trail for visitor or vehicle parking. But it's no new trail construction, is my understanding. So if you choose to support that project, well, that's what this letter would do for our comments.
Well, I'll tell you, Lewis Lodge needs a parking area for sure. And better identification of the trail. I've been there a couple of times. If you don't know where you're going, you'll probably get lost.
I think that's.
I would imagine it's way with all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the problem.
And on that Lewis Lodge site, they're they're planning to have a, evidently, the last part of the trail is, could be pretty hazardous. You could fall off an eight-hundred-foot drop there. But this overlook point, which is maybe midway or two-thirds of the way along the trail, is where they would have another kiosk explaining what the Lewis Lodge is, how to visit it. And and basically, I think, a little bit of a warning, maybe be confident of your footing if you're going to go farther. So they they're anticipating most of the visitors would stay across the canyon at this look lookout point to see the lodge on the opposite canyon wall.
It's no fun.
No, not as much of a, not as much of a challenge, huh?
Scale against the cliff.
But ruin wasn't discovered until nineteen fifty-six.
That's what I just read this morning. I was surprised, yeah.
Yeah, it's a real recent discovery. And when you start, start thinking about ruins. For them or not, nobody had really discovered it till fifty-six.
Yep.
But it's, it's spectacular.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve the letter. I think this is a good thing.
Okay. Second. Any further, I looked at some red markings on here on the map. And.
Which ones, Commissioner?
Let's start with the last one. This one.
Dry Wash Cave? Yes.
What's the difference, distance?
Of that trail, just looking by the scale that's on that map, it looks like it's a little over a mile from the parking area. In the description, it says designate the existing one-point-seven-mile-long trail. So nearly two miles, one and three-quarters, you know.
Then the the last second one, doesn't designate a parking lot?
Which one is that? Lewis Lodge.
Right here, you see it.
On the right-hand side of that photo, it shows a parking area and trailhead. Little narrow triangular-shaped section alongside the forest road.
If you look at the monitor, Commissioner, my cursor is right there on that parking, right there.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Dollhouse again, Nick. Just got a real big parking area.
Yeah. Okay. Motion cares?
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, consideration and approval of Pine View subdivision.
All right, thanks, Commissioners. Good afternoon. I've got the Pine View subdivision. This is forty acres of private land right at the edge of the forest. It's surrounded by Forest Service on three sides. It's about one and a half miles west of Monticello City along the North Creek Road, which is County Road one oh one. It's zoned A-one agriculture right now. This this proposed subdivision is shown on the map is for five lots, no, six lots, sorry, six lots. They're all range between eight-point-three and on the large acres down to five-point-two. So they're all fairly large lots. So this has been reviewed by staff. There is a County D road that runs, runs, there's two County D roads. One runs along a power line, that main one that comes through the main access road is a County D road that continues on along a power line. The one that goes along the south, along the fence line, on the the east fence line of the property is also a D road. That that one's more of a, kind of a four-wheeler trail, keeps going down to the south and accesses forest land to the south. Those will remain open, and it's noted on the plat that those will, that the county's road claim is still valid on those roads. And then the private, Ponderosa Lane, the cul-de-sac, is a, is a private road to the, that accesses lots five, four on the bottom, so.
So that D road through the center of the property, D road means two-track, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So is is the developer, will he be responsible to upgrade that road, or will the county?
So he has it, so the, he'll have to, he'll have to ma, the county doesn't maintain D roads or improve D roads. So, yeah, he'll have to, he'll have to, if he wants to improve it, he'll, he'll have to improve it and and maintain it, so.
Once he gets it improved, then can he turn it over to the county for county maintenance, or?
I imagine he could go through that process. It would have to.
To make the requests.
Yeah, he'd have to make the request to do that, yeah.
Do you know, is that road going to be a gravel or a paved road?
Just gravel.
Just a gravel road?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, this is, you know, it's, it's fairly high elevation. I'm not sure exactly where that sits, but probably close to eight thousand feet, I would guess, seventy, eight hundred, eight thousand feet, somewhere in there. So it's, it's going to be probably a seasonal. At least I know he's building a seasonal cabin on one of the lots is his plan, so.
Where does the city water line run? Does it run along the main road over there, or does it run through that D road?
It runs through that D road. It's marked there on the plat. And then it runs along the D road. And instead of kicking towards, when the D road kicks over to the, to the North Creek Road, it just keeps going straight.
Goes straight.
Straight down there. So it's marked on that as the water line.
And the power line is along the north side?
Yeah, yes, yeah, the north side of that road, the power line goes along. Yep. Yep.
So you can access that by the the North Creek Road, the San Juan County North Creek Road, and as well as the D road that runs through the property?
Yeah, and during the planning commission meeting last week, he mentioned that lots one and two, he's planning on accessing from the county road, the North Creek Road, and he's applied for encroachment permits for those.
Ingress and ingress.
Yeah, and encroachment.
For the other four lots.
Yeah, and so he's, I think he said he'd applied for three encroachment permits, one just for the connection there. Well, I guess that's already existing, the D road, but then these two, and then the rest of them will be accessed off that. He's, he's naming it the Pine View Road, which just will apply to his subdivision. It's actually the D road, D zero four three six, San Juan County D zero four.
But then all of them will have access with this cul-de-sac road, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, all the rest, yeah, they'll al, they'll also be able to access. So there may not be much access off of the actual D road. It may all be off of the, the North Creek Road for lots one and two, and the cul-de-sacs for lots three, four, five, and six, depending on how they, they could access it off the, the, the D road for the three and six, but for sure, four and five would be off the cul-de-sac.
What's the state code on subdivision? I mean, on lot size for lots that have to have septic? Is it still one acre?
Um, I'd have to look into that. That, that was the discussion that led to that two thousand nineteen amendment. The way I understand it is that they allow down to a quarter acre as long as it's either with a shared well or a, um, you know, some sort of advanced septic system or a public water system. So, but if, the county's always, we've always had the stance that if you've got a well and an, and a septic, we want one acre.
Right.
That two thousand nineteen amendment said, well, that's, that's our standard, but you could allow these down to this small according to the state's rule if we want to. I, my understanding is we don't have to allow that, but, but that's, yeah. So, but, but I don't know if the state has this.
Doesn't leave, doesn't say shall.
No, it says may.
May.
Mm-hmm.
As far as lot size with, with the septic system and the well.
Yeah, and I guess too, for your information, since we're talking about that, the planning commission voted on, was it just last Thursday? Last Thursday night, they voted to, regarding the ranches at Almeado's subdivision amendment, they did vote to require them to come back with lots no smaller than one acre. So, so that, that is what the developer has been directed by the planning commission, so, for that, for that subdivision, so, or that amendment.
Obviously, these lots are five acres, might, you know, we ran into a similar situation in Spanish Valley.
Mm-hmm.
Where they had acre lots, and then with the new s, watered sewer system, we, we allowed them to, to go smaller.
Mm-hmm.
And so a lot of those acre lots were, are being subdivided into quarter acre lots or so forth. I guess, I guess that potential exists in a subdivision like this one as well.
Yeah, it does. And we, we've, we've discussed with the, with the, the draft ordinances that the planning commission has been working on, that we've discussed making an agricultural zone require five acres instead of one.
Okay.
Because of, because of the nature of agricultural, really, we should have that be a larger, larger parcels than one acre. So that has been.
This in an agricultural zone?
This is in the agricultural zone, A-one.
It's in a zoning rezone.
No, and he, he could go down to one acre lots here, but he's, he's just dividing this up six ways and they're all well over five acres now. So even if he did, even if that zoning change was changed to five acres, he would, these lots would still conform to the new zoning, so.
Okay. You satisfied?
Hmm. Sounds all right.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second. Any further comments? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, also opposed, aye? Two in favor, zero opposed, motion carries. Next one?
Okay, the next one's mine as well, and I, I messed up putting this on the agenda. I didn't get my staff report attached or the, the plat. So I do have paper copies if you'd like to look at it.
We got it here too. They've got it in their packet as well.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Yeah.
Smaller eyeballs.
This is, this is bigger, but you can't, still can't read it.
Still can't read it. It's still pretty small. So this.
Bigger paper.
Yeah, so this subdivision amendment, um, is the, it's the, they pronounce it mercero. Mercero? I guess that, that basically there is a lot line adjustment between lots one and two A. So it increases, um, I can't remember which one. It increases lot two A and decreases lot one. Um, but both of them are close to lot one is, at, at the end, after the move is point-nine-seven acres in size and lot two A is one-point-one-five. So both of these are connected, have access, and they're connected to water and sewer in Spanish Valley Special Service District, so they.
Is this in Spanish?
This is in Spanish Valley, yeah. Mm-hmm. So yeah, this is, this is a subdivision that was created, um, I believe the original one was created in two thousand eighteen. It was a two-lot subdivision originally and, and this is, they've amended, previously amended lots one, or lot two into two A and two B. And now they, he's bought more property.
Where does he access off of what road?
Tara.
Tara Drive.
Tara Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Over there.
And that comes off of Sunny Acres Lane, right?
Yeah.
Right.
See it up here on the sun?
Yep.
Here's Sunny Acres Lane.
Mm-hmm.
There's Tara Drive. So that's this.
Right.
Tara Drive right here.
Yeah, we re, we reviewed this with staff. Didn't have any concern, yeah, we didn't have any concerns with it. It's a fairly straightforward lot line adjustment, um, so yeah. And the planning commission approved it at their last meeting.
Red desert survey, huh?
Yeah, it's Lucas Blake out of Moab.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second. Any further comments? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Commissioners.
I'll leave right now. I need to.
No, I'll be in, I'll, I'll be right.
I'll talk to Mac.
Okay.
My whole afternoon is taking up.
Thanks, Scott. Okay.
Report or adjourn?
Commission reports or adjourn, either one. It's up to you guys.
I've just been going to the legislature. That's all I had to report. With Mac.
Yeah.
So if you haven't reported, good. If you don't, I'll make a motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Adams to adjourn.
Okay.
I second. It's having a long discussion on.
Yeah, right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Motion carries. Two in favor, zero opposed. Thank you very much for attending.
Okay. You got your assignment? Have you got your assignment? To do what? Go talk to the city.
Kim will be listening.
Doing good?